And out front with every single thing that we do in this county, from the services that we provide, for the education of our children. It's just incredible that I serve on a board of commissioners with the caliber of you individuals, knowing that every single thing that we do is done for the betterment of our citizens in Dare County. And this is a perfect example, not only for our citizens and our employees who work for the county, but live in this county. And this is another perfect example of what we're about to look at today to be proactive and move quickly from several years back when we initially did this. Our goal was to eliminate compression. That's huge. And we have put us on the platform to do that. And we've looked at this and we've required, we've requested this study to be done. And I can't thank these folks, Evergreen Solutions, with what they've been able to do with, and Mr. Rob Williams and his team, along with our staff and our county manager and our human resources. This, once again, is being proactive and not reactive. And I can't thank you gentlemen enough for what you do for this county. With that being said, county manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just a little context. As you know, I don't know how many, a year or so ago, we began having these discussions about the problems we were having in the labor market. And we, you all directed us to get this salary study done. Over that period of time, Evergreen Solutions had been working on that. They'd been talking with our staff. And they're going to take you through their processes in just a minute. But we're at a point now where we have this salary study that hopefully will bring us to market, will save, solve some of our compression issues, solve some of our salary issues. And as they take it through, this is your opportunity to ask questions. I'd sent this to you all a few days ago when we got it, so to give you an opportunity to look at it so that you could ask questions. You know, we may, I don't know what your pleasure is going to be when we complete this. If you all want to have discussions about implementation of this, we've passed out some spreadsheets this morning to tell you how we could actually implement that. And Dave and I can take you through those spreadsheets at the end of the process. If you want to hear that and then mull it over, we can come back at our November meeting and you can make decisions then if you need more time to think about it and ask questions. But again, we have the information here available for you. With all that said, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add, Elizabeth? Okay. With that, we'll turn it over to Evergreen Solutions. And Rob Williamson's here to make the presentation.
Rob, welcome this morning. And thank you very much. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. It is good to be with you, commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say right off the bat that Bobby and Elizabeth, Cindy and your team have done a heck of a job. They've been so responsive throughout this entire process. And the word that kept coming up when we were here for outreach was family. And you definitely have, it seems like, a family here. You can tell. And it has really been neat to be a part of on this journey that started back in March. I tell you, you know, Peter, the consultant on our team, he moved to Raleigh, so he's now a North Carolina resident. And my dad retired to Brevard 20 years ago. And I just had the opportunity to meet him, not meet him, I just had the opportunity to spend time with him last week. And it was the first time I'd ever been here when the leaves were changing. And so basically, I've spent more time in North Carolina in the past couple of weeks than I have at Florida at home. And it hasn't been all bad. I'll tell you, this is, this is a beautiful part of the world. And it is, it is really neat to be back with you. So what we want to go over with you today is just a presentation of the findings. We're going to give you a little bit of an overview of the process and what the study goals were when we got started here with you. I was actually in this very room. And we had orientation sessions and focus groups. And then we had another, Peter was in another room conducting focus groups as well. And we're going to talk a little bit about that part of the process. The current findings, what we found kind of when we got on scene, if you will. We're going to talk a little bit about the market results because I know that that's vitally important to you, especially when we're talking about one of the most hypercompetitive labor markets maybe in the history of this nation. And things are moving very quickly. And the uniqueness of your area means that your market is a challenge. And I know that representing an area that is this unique, you understand that better than anyone, that it is a challenge with the market results that we're going to have. We'll, we'll show you what that looks like. And then ultimately, we've got recommendations. You hired us to make recommendations to you. We've got some implementation options and the associated costs. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate you guys being here today. I just checked with chairman to see if we may ask you questions as you're speaking to us. Because as you present things, they absolutely pop into my head. Is there any segment of the labor market that you're aware of that is not hypercompetitive? You use that phrase, and I'm wondering, are there any exceptions to that phrase that you're aware of?
You know, rising tide lifts all boats. And right now, I can't think of anyone that's not going up.
Nor could I. That's why I'm asking if you guys came across it.
You could go IT, Commissioner Ross. You could look at engineering, you know, those ones that might be more private sector competitive, where, you know, public sector is never going to compete with the private sector throwing money at some of these positions just so they can staff them. But on the whole, things are starting to temper a bit in the labor market, which means the public sector is going to begin to become more attractive again because of the stability that it can provide. But I would say, to answer your question, no, I can't think of an area where things aren't still, still going up. There is a portion of the labor market, however, that is decreasing. Hospitality has not come back. Tourism has not come, restaurant, healthcare, education, those four quadrants, they've increased, but they're certainly not back to their pre-pandemic level. And you could call it the great resignation, the great retirement, the great realignment, the great reshuffle, the great stimulus. You can put whatever great in front of it you want to. But the labor market is very competitive right now.
Rob, even with the blue collar trades, your plumbers, your gut people that work with their hands, is that inclusive in, in this?
I think it's a great point because people are making decisions about where they want to work now, but, and location wise, and we've seen that. But we've also seen a shift in what type of work they want to do. And so here again, the hospitality, restaurant, which I know is a big impact here, and, you know, the tourism numbers that you have, I think you did 4 million visitors last year or something like that, along with those introductory labor type positions, yeah, they're, they're very competitive. But there's also, we're noticing, there's not as many people that are willing to do that type of work. They're changing careers. They might look at it as, you know, if I'm going to make $16 an hour, $17 an hour, then I'm going to maybe look at something, doing something else that provides me more flexibility. Or they're making different choices. Good questions. So the study goals we started with, we wanted to ultimately get you to a pay plan that was fair and competitive. That's what I could boil this down to. And we looked at doing that in two different ways. We wanted to create internal equity and external equity. And internal equity basically is what Mr. Chairman, what Chairman was talking about earlier with solving for wage compression. And a labor market that is competitive as this one, what, yes, sir?
That is, Bob, exactly what we were attempting to do, I think it was five years ago, Bobby?
Seven, believe it or not. It's hard to believe.
No, we did this study in 2017. I was here. When did we implement?
16 was the survey we implemented in.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Five years. I was here. I was just brand new.
Yeah, but we talked about, that's fine.
My point being, we attempted to solve that. And as I read through the slides, I thought, we didn't do it. We didn't get it resolved so that there would be, well, how can I phrase this? An ongoing sort of systematic, without need for intervention, a system that allowed for addressing compression so that we didn't face it in three years, or four years, or five years. And as you go through this, if you could highlight for us or explain where we might have missed something, because I'd like to fix it. If we're going to fix it, I'd like to get a systematic fix so that, yeah, external equity, we really don't have much control over. But internal, we can kind of adjust and flex our levels and grades and so forth. So it's just kind of a comment as you proceed on internal equity. Thank you.
Sure. We can kind of fast forward to the end of the movie, if you will, and just give you a sneak peek that what we will ultimately recommend to you, Commissioner, is to solve for wage compression because we heard from your leadership team.
Why did we get to this, solve the wage compression? I was hoping that we would not be solving a wage compression.
Oh, well, I would say it's, it's not, we have plenty of folks that have done surveys and done studies three years ago, five years ago, that find themselves in the same situation. And I think part of it is, we had, you know, talking more globally here, we had a labor market that was progressing, not inflationary at all, but it was progressing quickly, increasing. Wage rates were increasing quickly post-pandemic. And then you started to add in inflation to that, and those wage pressures have continued. Wages have continued to go up. So I would say, you know, we have quite a few clients that they maintain their pay plans on a consistent annual basis, and wage compression can still creep up. So it's not that, you know, you did something right or wrong necessarily. Part of it is a factor of the market. But I think that once you get it corrected, if you choose to implement the proposed pay plan that's before you, I think that you'll know that at the end of, at the time of implementation, you will have solved for wage compression, you will have a competitive market position, and that you will have internal and external equity, which was one of our main study goals from the start, as directed by your county manager and your leadership team. I think it was on the kickoff call that that was, that was put forward front and center, that that was one of the policy directives that you wanted to see, was to make sure that we had that as our study goals, and we did.
Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I can help Commissioner Ross. Up until recently, we've not done a COLA on an annual basis. And I think we've had some conversation about moving forward after this last budget, that we would, we would, we would continue COLA annually rather than skipping a couple of years and stuff. And by doing so, I may be wrong, correct me, but I feel like that is adding to, by not doing that annually, would add to a compression issue. Is that a fair statement to make?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. You know, after 2008, 2009 recession, we had quite a few counties and municipalities that maybe they skipped years of doing a COLA. I think of one in Virginia, a client that we have that we got on site, you know, we found out after doing their market study that they were 18% behind market. And they had typically done about a 3% on average cost of living adjustment every year. And they'd gone six years without one. Well, there's your 18%, you know, so it shouldn't have been a surprise. Yes, a cost of living adjustment is one way to have those pay bands or those pay ranges continue to go up. And even if, you know, you're, you're doing a, let's think, this year, you're at 2.5% is what's proposed, and that's going against an 8.3% inflation number. But if you do a three-year rolling average, as long as you're providing a cost of living adjustment every year, you're going to have an opportunity to stay competitive, or certainly more competitive than you could if you did nothing. Absolutely.
Does this, excuse me, but, but does that put you into a posture of chasing inflation?
Yes. I mean, that's.
Well.
I feel as though if you're doing, like, we have clients that do a three-year rolling average, that they have success with that. It's hard to believe, but if you look back two years ago, in 2020, two years ago, inflation was 1.2%. That, I mean, that's, that's insane to think about, that, that it was.
How, how many years in a row was it approximately 1% to 2% prior to 2020?
Definitely a decade before. We were 2% or less.
We were living in a very stable economy, which has now basically gone into some sort of hyper inferno. And.
When we get into budget time.
Yeah.
One, the COLA, we talk about that every time. But we're going to need to talk about, because the COLA was one element, but we don't have a mechanism to move somebody from their starting salary through the grades so that if they have a 30-year career, they're at the top of their grade when they get through. The way we do it is every five years, we do a new salary study and we recalibrate. We give them credit for their time served, and we move them up through the grades by that. But we don't do anything annually, if you will, that moves them through the grade. And it's a, it creates the compression problem because if they're not moving, we're having to hire new people at the new market rate. But the guy that's been here 10 years hasn't moved up 10-year spaces in the grade.
There, you've put your finger on it, Bobby.
And we don't have a mechanism to do that. This study isn't giving us that mechanism to do that.
I know that. I recognize that.
And so that's something we're going to have to decide and think how we're going to do it.
That's what I was looking for with my question. Thank you. Okay.
So you've had an opportunity to review the slide deck before the meeting. You can tell the project phases that we went through, starting back with our in-person outreach. I'm going to go ahead and go to the next slide to talk about that employee participation piece because I feel that's so important. Basically, if you could split this project up into thirds, the first third would be data collection. And part of that data collection is the employee participation piece. Then we go into data analysis, and then we go into presenting the findings and making our recommendations, which is where we find ourselves today. But that's starting, you know, beginning with the end in mind type of deal. That employee participation piece is vitally important. We have a job assessment tool survey. It's a survey instrument that went out to every single one of your employees, providing every employee at Dare County an opportunity to be heard. And we feel that is vitally important when we get to a step like we are here, and you as policymakers are looking to make a decision that could impact people's lives, the amount of money that they bring home to their families. And I know you take that very seriously, as do we. And we feel like giving people an opportunity to be heard to where they could tell us in their own words what it is that they do here in service to Dare County. We didn't just read their job description online and look at their job title and think that that encapsulates what they do for you. We actually got that survey data that talked about their essential functions, the five compensatory factors of work that they do, a brief job description in their own words of the work that they perform. Their supervisors reviewed that data. Then we reviewed that data. So when we were here on site, we had multiple orientation sessions, we had focus groups with supervisors, department directors, non-supervisors. It really was an opportunity to figure out what the narrative is and what's going on here. We use that as kind of the springboard for moving forward. This slide here gives you an understanding of how important this was to your staff and your employees. They are leaning forward. And I'll tell you, we have some counties, I have a rural county in Florida that I'm working with, their participation rate was 32% on their survey.
We're nine out of 10 almost.
Wow.
You're correct, Commissioner. And that is extraordinary. That says a lot about the interest that your team has and what's going on here. And it also shows that we feel it provides a more defensible end product when we get to that recommendations phase because your folks have had an opportunity to weigh in. You notice your, the number of classifications, which I wanted to highlight today, of the 225 classifications surveyed, 218 we have responses for. That means those individual job titles, we received job assessment tool surveys for 218 of 225, which is extraordinary. Some comments we received during outreach, this is, you know, not empirical data, all right? This is the narrative, it is perceptual in nature. But it should be no surprise that folks viewed benefits, as is often the case in the public sector, is one of the main reasons for beginning employment and remaining the county. I can tell you that there was not a single meeting that I sat in with your staff where they did not talk about culture, where they didn't talk about the specialness of this place, the uniqueness of this place, and then how much they enjoy the people that they work with. And I think that is, that is very unique. And it says a lot about the, the family dynamic that you have here, and quite frankly, your leadership team, because it starts there.
Rob, you said it was very unique. You guys do this stuff for a living. Would you say the positive responses in this category, and I think I'm leading you to an answer here, was a bit of an outlier versus other organizations or cultures that you have reviewed? Or were we kind of well above the average? I'm kind of searching for, because I think we're doing a pretty decent job. And your opinion or feedback would be helpful on this.
Yeah, Commissioner, I would, I wouldn't classify it as an outlier. And what I'm commenting on is, is more of the, the sense of community and family that employees commented on here. And yeah, I mean, I'm project manager in eight different states right now with engagements. And some of them are, are pretty toxic. I was in one a couple of weeks ago. It's, you know, it's a pretty toxic situation. I think here, employees by and large have respect for each other, they enjoy working for each other, and they also enjoy the location that they work.
It's a sense I get, and it's actually very reassuring to hear a third party say. Yeah.
A lot of them talked about how rewarding it was to work for the community as well, like, kind of gave them a sense of giving back, which was important. Some of the concerns that they expressed, you know, external equity. When you start looking specifically at those communities that are here, Kill Devil Hills, Nag's Head, you know, I think market positioning wise that you're about 25 and 21% behind, on average, behind market in those two communities specifically. And that goes to the external equity comments that we received from team members. Internal equity, that wage compression issue that we were addressing before, you know, let's say that I've been working here for six years and I'm making $18 an hour, and then we have an open position, and to fill that open position, they might have to pay $17.50 to fill that same open position. And now you have someone that is making almost as much as the person that is a tenured employee. There's your wage compression. That was referenced quite a bit in your focus group sessions as well. The good news is, it's not a problem that we can't solve. And then housing affordability. I know that, that is, that is one of the things that's unique about this area, is the popularity of it. But housing affordability is something that was definitely mentioned. If you have employees that have been here for quite some time, maybe purchased their home before the 2015 time period, 2014, then affordability is not as much of an issue. But there were several times in focus groups that we would have employees tell us that people would get to the point where they were looking at making a decision to come here and work, and they had been offered a position, and then they started looking for housing opportunities. And ultimately, they, they had to decide to not take the position.
Rob, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Just following up on the housing affordability issue concern, in your experience, of course, we're, we're dealing with, with county employees. But if, in your experience, if you were doing the same sort of survey with the municipalities over on the beach, would you anticipate getting the same sort of response regarding housing?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is a unique location. And so housing affordability is going to impact all up and down the coast, absolutely.
Just want to get it on record. Thank you.
No, that's not unique to, that's not unique to Dare County. If you're, you're trying to work here, it's, it's going to be an issue.
Thank you for pointing that out. I mean, just last night, I mean, we're, we're not the only ones dealing with housing, fellas. Look at our neighbors north. Big article last night, main topic on the news in Norfolk was, was housing affordability. They can't, they can't hire folks. And, and they've got, our neighbors have it, just to the north above us, not only in counties and small towns, but large municipalities such as Norfolk, Virginia, Virginia Beach. So it's, it's, it's across the board.
Yeah. And I don't think you're going to stop being popular anytime soon, for sure.
Hope you're right.
So a couple of the strengths that we found when analyzing, obviously, we could have probably put up a lot more bullet points, I just tried to pick out a couple of salient points here that you can consider as policymakers. One is that you, you did have an established pay plan with pay ranges, with consistent progression between those different pay grades. And that the tenure, overall tenure is about nine years. You have an unbelievable opportunity to leverage that institutional knowledge here. And I would strongly urge you to continue working on succession planning with those tenured employees. Career development, career pathing is vitally important to today's workforce. Yes, millennials, Gen Z'ers, they are leaving jobs on average every 2.8 to 2.3 years. But those where they stay longer are those where they have an opportunity for a defined career path. And a lot of times, that means they're going to have an opportunity to work with somebody that, for lack of a better way of saying it, been there, done that. You're going to get an opportunity to get valuable experience from somebody who has years of experience in the industry. And I feel like you have an opportunity to leverage that here going forward. It is definitely one of the strengths of your team. One thing that we did see was that 73% basically of all employees are compensated below their pay grade midpoint. So Bobby talked about the 30-year career. And so if I've been here 15 years, that would be the midpoint, right? So right now, at, when we started and we got the initial data, you were looking at 73% of your employees were behind that midpoint, which I think it goes to what he's talking about in that is that ability to progress employees within their specific pay grade, within their classification title. And then the other point that we had there was that 50%, 50% of the employees fall into quartile one of their respective grade, basically showing that the county is behind market at the minimum. So then we get to the market targets. And the market targets is one area where, as I said, this is a very unique area. So, you know, we need to, one of the comments that we heard from the leadership team and from your employees when we were here, was that the last study, maybe all of the market peers that were used were not the best, or they didn't feel as though they were the most representative, or that they maybe got to the most defensible end result. And so we tried to, in working with the leadership team, along with recommendations that we got during the focus groups, because we asked folks during the focus groups, who do you think we should be comparing you to? When a job position comes available and they make the decision to go work somewhere else, where is that somewhere else? So that we could look at evaluating them and see if they should make the list. Ultimately, we tried to end up with around 15 to 20 market peers that we would compare you to. And the idea was that we would cast a little bit of a broader net, if you will, but that we were trying to look at markets that might have some of the unique characteristics that you have. So for example, a Myrtle Beach, I realize that the tourism customer that you go after here is really nothing like the tourism customer that go after there. But there are some similarities, I think, in what the workforce dynamic is and the service levels that are provided, and the services that are provided. So you see that in there. Obviously, some of the local municipalities, those were must haves that your team referenced that we put in there as well. We adjusted for cost of living for any of the classification data we had that went into it. So we had 12.
Rob, can, can you explain that column a little? I'm not sure if I understand that last column, bestplaces.net.
Sure.
Cost of living. Can, can you go into a little bit of detail explaining to me the percentages?
Absolutely. We use, typically, we use a cost of living adjustment that's been around since the late 50s, early 60s. And when we brought that forward, I think there was some comments that there was a preference to use what the Chamber of Commerce used, which was this best places. So we were fine with, with going with that. So that's where we ended up getting our cost of living adjustments.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
So, is the per capita income adjusted to that cost of living? Or is the per capita, where do you get the per capita income from, the federal government?
That's from census. Great question. That's from census data. No, sir, that is not adjusted. That's just right off straight from the census data or city data. Great question.
Wanted that to be on the record.
Yeah, how did that, is that like taking our 37,000 residents? Because many of them are, you know, young kids. I'm wondering how per capita. I've, I've been working, as we have, with area median income for three years on our housing project. And that's a number we are all very familiar with. This was a new number to me, and I was curious about its definition. Well, substantially, though, yeah. The definition of per capita, how it was derived?
It, it comes directly from the United States Census for each municipality that we listed in.
Yeah, I wasn't challenging it's wrong. I'm curious how they derived it. Do you guys know, if you could, maybe afterwards, or find out, or we can find out? I'd like to know how that was calculated, I guess is what I'm asking.
We can go to the census data. They tell you in the census report how it's calculated?
Whenever we filled up census things and sent those in, that's where the federal government gets it from.
I think they take the.
But what do they, tell me exactly how the calculation is made? I don't think any of us know that. And that's what I wanted to find out.
I think it's in the census data.
Yes, that's, again, Rob, I'm referencing, because again, we've been working with 64, 65, is AMI, against which we have measured and calculated all of our housing efforts. So I'm just curious as to a brand new number here, almost half of what we have had as our.
Well, median household income is what you're referring to, correct?
Area median income. The area as defined under low-income housing tax credit and the, I want to say it was the Novogradic scale. And it had roughly. And it had roughly Dare County at 60, I'm going to say roughly $64,000 a year as a median income of family of two or four.
Yeah, that was family. The Census says the per capita income is the mean income computed for every man, woman and child in a particular group, including those living in group quarters, is derived by dividing the aggregate income of the group by the total population in that group and it's rounded to the nearest whole dollar.
So this would be individual people in a household?
Right. This would be 37,000 people divided into the income, and I guess they would figure out income somehow.
Yeah, it's, the income used to determine the average per person income for an area and to evaluate the standard of living and quality of life of the population.
Yeah, okay.
So if you go both, give a, a household of two people working, you double that number where we're at, where we're at for housing.
A little higher, 72.
Rob, just one other.
Like the per capita, like what might be more familiar for you is like when you're looking at per capita tax numbers, that's, you know, what is the tax that each individual pays? So.
Again, I'm not disputing that it's incorrect. I'm simply going after the definition because when we see numbers and if we don't know what the specificity is of that number and its definition, it can lead us to incorrect conclusions. So thank you, Rob.
Rob, just one other question in that same column, just in, in an explanation of those numbers, with Dare County being 109.3, what is that basically saying?
If 100 is the base mark, that you are, you know, 9% above that, so it would be 9% more expensive, if you will. Yeah, and obviously, you, you can tell that, that's another thing that factors into the uniqueness, Commissioner, that you have here is the cost of living. It's, you know, of any of the markets here, you're, you're at the, you're at the peak.
As we say, it ain't cheap.
Yeah. That's right. So moving on to the market peers, we had an overall list, but as, you know, sometimes the case, we don't have everyone respond. We'd like them to, but it doesn't always work out that way. But we did get 12 of the peers responded. As I said, we adjusted for cost of living and that ended us with a very defensible, almost seven matches per classification title. I realize that, you know, this is very small. I tried to, you know, tried to split it up over several slides, so I apologize for, for that, but this gives you an idea of the classification title. We went out to market, I think, with roughly 100 benchmark classifications that we looked at. For example, if you were to take the accountant position at the top, we had 11 responses. We averaged those 11 responses together from the peers that we got credible data from and that ends up with a average at the minimum midpoint and maximum. So in your market, it shows the minimum would be, that would be the starting salary position that you'd be looking at for an accountant in your market. We carried on through for all of those benchmark classifications. Now that is combined where you can see your overall position, if you look at the survey minimum, your overall position, you're about 18.5% behind market when you calculate in all positions and at the midpoint about 18%. The midpoint's important because typically that factors in some level of experience and tenure. So that's typically one that you want to put a little bit more weight into when you're looking at it. Which I don't think that that necessarily surprised anyone too much, but it, it is something to be, there's a price tag associated with getting from 18% behind market to market competitive.
When you look at like the accountant line where it says the different percent difference is 14.6%, that means that we're above the midpoint there and where they're negative, we're below the midpoint?
Correct. That differential relates to how the county is performing on any specific classification title relative to the market. So if we go back to that accountant position, for example, at the survey minimum, I believe that's, we're at 14% behind market.
14%.
Or is it ahead of, ahead of market? I apologize. I can barely see it myself and I've got my glasses on.
Then if you go to the far right, to the next to the last column where it says survey average range, what does that tell me?
The survey average range is the range spread and that basically is the distance between the survey minimum and maximum. So that is the amount of progression that an employee could realize from the survey minimum to the maximum. So for the accountant position, I believe that's right at 56%. Your 56% is 50,162 minimum. You go up 56% from that, you end up getting to the survey maximum.
And, and is there a benchmark that tells you where you should be? I mean.
Typically, we'd want to be between, you know, it's a wide range, but, you know, 55 to 70% is a range spread that is comfortable. You, you want to provide folks enough opportunity to progress in their respective classification over a 30-year career, if we're assuming that someone would stay in the same job for a 30-year career. So we've listed a few of the positions there, keeping in mind that the plan that we're putting in front of you is based on individual classifications, not on individuals. We didn't base it on personalities and performance. It's based on individual classifications. Some of them were significantly behind market, 30% or more. So next we get to the recommendations portion. One of the things that we recommended was that adjusted pay plan with 21 total pay grades. Just talked about those range spreads and the progression between the grades. We'll show you what that looks like here in just a moment on the next slide. Then we, using the job assessment tool, survey and those scores to help slot with internal equity and using the market position to make sure that we slotted employees into their recommended pay grade competitively, we ended up with a proposed pay plan, starting at 31,200. This is based on a 2080 annual hourly scale. You can see that we have a minimum midpoint and maximum established for each of the 21 pay grades. We went with a range spread of 60%. Here again, largely weighting things toward market positioning. We wanted to make sure that we built out the pay plan that would enable us to slot classifications into the recommended pay grades and allow them to be slotted to where they'd be competitive to market. And then the midpoint progression that you see of 7%, that is, the 7% is the difference between grades when you progress from grade 101 to 102. For example, at the midpoint, the 40,516, you go 7% from there, you get to the 43,399. It's a very simple, straightforward pay plan that is easy to follow.
And how many grades are we dealing with now?
I think we reduced the number of grades.
Elizabeth, yeah, how many grades we have?
101 to 121.
No, that's a pose. How many today?
Okay.
Say that again?
29.
So what you have here, the implementation options, first thing that we put in there, bring to minimum, we don't think that that's going to meet expectations of what you want to do as being a, let's say, a, operating on a high level, public sector employer, but the bring to minimum is.
The county commissioner's grade is six. You've got 101 to 121, I think we slot in at level six. It's not on the page.
Yeah, right.
Sorry. Oh, yeah.
We, I, we gave you a special grade.
Very special.
Going back to that family comment again, you can tell that it's a family. So the bring to minimum is included in the hybrid parity and comp ratio. It is not in addition to. So when we talk about, when I explain the hybrid parity to you in a moment, it's not, well, hybrid parity is 3.7 million, but, you know, to do hybrid parity and bring employees to the minimum in their pay grade, we're going to have to add 1.2. The 1.2 is included in the 3.7, okay?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that as you go through. This is, I think, very, very important for us to all understand, so if you kind of go just a little slow and explain each one of the three, if you would.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Rob.
So the bring to minimum would move an employee to the minimum of their respective pay grade. So if someone is currently behind the minimum, when we move them into their new recommended pay grade, we would make sure that we move them to the minimum of what the market would provide. So if we go back to the previous slide, you can see the minimum here. Let's say I'm making $14 an hour and I'm going to be in grade 101. Well, now to move that employee to the minimum in their pay grade of 101, it's $15 an hour. So we would, to bring to minimum, would just bring that employee to the minimum in their pay grade. Now, if someone is, let's say in that example, I'm making $16 an hour and I'm in pay grade 101, well, I'm already at the minimum, there would be no adjustment for me. Okay? So bring to minimum just brings an employee to the minimum of their respective pay grade.
And, and, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, let me ask. If, in, in doing this, say we've got an employee now that's been with the county for, say, two years and we do the, bring them to minimum, so they come up to the minimum because they're below that, then the very next hot person we hire next week is going to be right at the minimum with them.
Coming next.
No, that's a great question and that's why we didn't recommend the bring to minimum. That's exactly what you're bringing up, so it's a good point.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, no, so I'm going to take them out of order here. I'm going to go with comp ratio next, which is at the bottom. And I'm going to tell you why we don't want to go with that one, but I, I put that in there for perspective. What comp ratio says is whatever an employee's relationship was to the midpoint, that that would be maintained when we create the new system. So in other words, if I'm currently 5% behind the midpoint in my grade, that when we put that employee into the new recommended pay grade, that they would stay 5% behind the midpoint. That doesn't do anything for wage compression. So I don't think that's an option that is fiscally sustainable and we certainly don't think it solves the particular issues that you are looking to solve. So that brings us to hybrid parity, which, Commissioner House, this is going to be of great interest to you because it solves for what you were just talking about. Hybrid parity gives employees full credit for the time that they have spent in their existing classification, in their existing job title. But it also gives them 50% credit for their overall organizational tenure, the remaining time that they've spent regardless of what classification title or what job title they've been in. So in that example, let's say I've been working for the county for 16 years, okay? And four of those years, I have been in a supervisory role, I've been in my new role, right, for four years. So the hybrid parity says that we will give that employee four years, 100% credit for the four years that they've spent in their current job title. Then we have 16 years total, right? We subtract the four from the 16, we get 12 and they would get half credit for that. So we'd have the four years for time served in their existing classification, we'd add six years for the half of the overall tenure for the remaining time they've spent and we would move that employee 10 years of the 30 in the overall tenure parity, if you will. So in a 30-year career, we would take that employee and we would slot them, moving them 10 years of the 30 years in their recommended pay grade. So what that does is, let's say I've, in that example, you have somebody that's been working here four years, they're going to be moved based on not just the time they've spent overall working for the county, but also the time they've spent in their current job. But we're going to be able to create some healthy separation, if you will, based on a hybrid of not just overall tenure, but also time spent in your classification. And what that does is, let's say you've got a high performer and they have been promoted, it doesn't penalize them for just having promoted. It rewards them for their promotion and their work, but it also rewards that employee, maybe that's served you for 20, 25 years.
If you recall, in the last pay study, that was one of the criticisms that we had. We had a bunch of people, I know it happened in the Sheriff's Department, that had just gotten promoted, got credit for one year of service and yet they had been in the Sheriff's Department for 15 or 20 years and they didn't really benefit much from the study and, and that was one of the issues that this solves.
That would be called class parity. That's when you only move an employee based on the years that they've spent in their current classification. And that can cause some issues. Typically, it's a financial decision when somebody chooses to go with that. Hybrid parity is a great option, it's the best option and it's certainly the one that we would recommend for you.
And last time, if you recall, we had to go through the pay study to create the quality that we didn't get out of the study and we didn't want to have to do that again, so.
We also fixed those individuals that you're speaking of. We went through for the past five years from the salary study back to see anyone that had been promoted and if it would affect them and if it affected them in a negative way, then we'd give them what it would have been if they did an increase if they were not.
Because we had people that didn't want to promote. They wouldn't promote because they would get more staying where they were and getting 20 years of credit than promoting, getting their 5% increase and only getting one year of credit. So it, it really creates some problems that Elizabeth and I had to go through manually and fix.
Is there any implication here or any inference to a performance or merit level? In other words, in all the organizations I've worked in, there's a bell curve. 10 to 15% are outstanding. Roughly 60 to 70% fall in the just below average, just above average and there's typically somewhere in the 5 to 10% range that may not be performing at all. Is any of that under consideration? I'm looking at Elizabeth, not you, Rob. Any of that take into consideration when we go through this plan?
For this current plan?
Merit.
No, that is not.
We have a merit plan that is described like you just described, but it's not factored into this.
It's an outstanding.
That is.
Part two. Should it be?
That, and when we, I told you in the budget, we needed to talk about how to move people through the grade. That is a mechanism, you can do it, but you have to adequately fund it so that it works and ours isn't funded sufficiently that even with the bonus plan, you can move somebody through the grade.
No, I understand, but let's, theoretically, we adopt this, we, we're going to implement it. And John Doe is in that bottom five or 7% because frankly, they're a problem. Elizabeth's dealing with them all the time, their boss is dealing with them. They would receive the same compensation adjustment on a peanut butter spread as the outstanding performer who is just a gem that we would value very highly and.
Because this is to create you paying at the market rate and paying compensation levels based on time. The merit, the merit plan is to reward in addition to that, people who are high performers.
Right.
You are correct. If a low performer has, if an individual has been here for 12 years and they are a low performer, they will still, and they are below market, they will still get an increase and be where the high performer is.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's what I thought, okay.
There's also, go ahead, William, sorry. Just, just for clarification, one other time, and let's talk about the employee that's been here for four or five years, let's say.
Yes, sir.
In the same classification, okay? And we're talking about the hybrid parity adjustment again. So, so walk through what kind of increase that individual would get.
It would, they get, if that individual, let's say in this example, they've been there four years and they've been one year in their current class title, they're going to get 100% credit for the time they've spent in their classification and then they get 50% credit for any remaining time regardless of their job title.
Well, let's say they've just been in the same title the whole time they've been here.
Then that would be four-year adjustment.
The, the, the 100% credit?
Correct. 100% credit.
Okay. Nothing additional.
Correct.
And that takes care of, that's still a hybrid adjustment.
Right. But if they'd have been here five years, they would have gotten some credit for the other year they weren't in this job.
If they were on a different classification.
Right, exactly.
A, a different job.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
And going back to what was just discussed on how to maintain the system, you, you bring up a vitally important point. I mean, that, that is the next step in the process is, once you reset the clock, as you will, like Bobby was talking about last time, you kind of reset the clock and right now, your, kind of your, your strategy is that you're going to reset every three to five years when you have a salary study. If you want to move away from that, then maintaining the system with a combination of COLA and performance evaluation based merit is, is going to be the, the secret sauce there, absolutely. Otherwise, you're going to end up right back, I mean, it might be more targeted, you know, your wage compression might crop up in those highly competitive areas, but bottom line, it's pretty much impossible for it not to crop up if you just do a COLA. Did you have a question, Commissioner?
Well, just entry level people, I, I think this is even, has some attractiveness to, to them too. They, we're, we're going to be a little bit, we're going to be doing better than we have in the past, which proves our competitive leverage.
Commissioner, this is a game changer for the county. It, it addresses what employees' concerns are. It, it tackles two main issues. One, it immediately eliminates wage compression that you have throughout the county and it immediately makes you market competitive. That, that is an absolute game changer when you're looking to try to recruit and retain into an area that's this. That, that is an absolute game changer when you're looking to try to recruit and retain into an area that's this unique. Absolutely. And it doesn't solve all your problems, you know, and a, a pay plan is a living, breathing, dynamic thing, you know? It's, people are getting hired and moving in and out every day, but it, it absolutely puts you in an unbelievably strong position the day you decide to implement.
So, Rob, as we, as we start dealing going forward, let's say we, we've got this plan in place. We've made the adjustment. We, we've chosen hybrid parity, and we're, we're moving forward on the basis of, of the suggestion. And we're going to deal with COLAs as you suggest henceforth to try to keep us up to speed, let's say, keep us where we need to be. With, and this is getting back to the inflation question, with, with the extremely high inflations that, that are kind of, folks are projecting. What is that doing regarding the COLAs? Where, where do you anticipate COLAs going year over year?
I believe you have to be fiscally sustainable. And, and, you know, we, we have clients that, you know, I have one in the metro Atlanta area that their board approved an eleven and a half percent COLA. And I, quite frankly, I don't understand how they're going to be able to afford to pay for that in twenty-four months' time. And that was a recommendation that I brought to them. So, I feel like any, you know, any decision that you make has to be done with fiscal sustainability in mind, and, you know, it is cyclical. And so, yes, inflation is extraordinary right now. And, you know, we, we talked about rates going up. We talked about how inflation was at one point two, and, you know, now it's at eight point three. That's extraordinary. But.
But if fiscal sustainability doesn't equal what the COLA in that case should be, let's say fiscal, just round numbers, let's say you recommended ten percent, but fiscal sustainability is six percent. Then you're behind four percent all of a sudden. Am I reading that right?
Right, right, but not as far. And that's only a one-year, you know, backward-looking number. What I would say is, you know, if inflation right now is eight point three percent, I certainly wouldn't stand before this board and recommend that you do an eight point three percent COLA and that you would be matching. I, I don't, I wouldn't say that. What I would say is that over time, a cost of living adjustment allows you the best opportunity to not fall too far behind market, especially if you're doing a three-year rolling average. Probably just as important, Commissioner, is what you do to progress people within their range. And that can be done with, you know, what we would recommend is you're looking at a three and a half percent for merit for each year, because over the course of a thirty-year career, if you look at that three and a half percent, somebody's going to progress from that minimum to the maximum of their salary. And that performance review would allow somebody to only get a maximum of a three and a half percent increase. And that's how you could start rewarding and having accountability for those high performers and low performers. If somebody is a low performer and they are not getting the job done, and you need to put them on a performance improvement plan, well, maybe they only get a half a percent or a one percent increase. You have a high performer that's getting the job done and is performing at a high level, delivering services to your citizens, they may be at the three percent. And yet, that's going to start creating a gap if both of those employees are in the same job title, and that's exactly what should happen. You have a high performer should be getting paid more than that chronic poor performer to where hopefully you're moving them up or out. Right? And so, that gives you an opportunity that when you do the next study in three to five years, that the adjustments aren't as large, is the last thing I would say, because of what you talk about. You know, if inflation, God forbid, stays eight percent for another year and we go back to nineteen seventy-eight, you know, and we go back to that time period, that'd be very scary. But if we needed to have an adjustment through the result of another salary study, it wouldn't be an eighteen and a half percent adjustment that we're looking at now.
Gotcha.
Rob, a couple of things. I realize that this average adjustment of sixty-seven ninety is on five hundred and fifty-five employees, and I understand that that's an average adjustment. Would those particular classes that you pointed out with respects to market results, with respects to the register of deeds, man, business manager, library, thirty percent? I understand the average is sixty-seven. Are those, those specific positions that you pointed out that were thirty percent behind market, are they going to get more than that average?
That is a phenomenal question, because I, I should have mentioned this earlier. It's important to note that not every classification title was behind market. Some are behind market, some aren't behind market. So, there are going to be some employees that are at market, and they are not going to be recommended for an increase. There are others that, you know, because of the amount of time that they've spent working for Dare County and the amount of time that they've spent working their current classification, they could be recommended for more of an increase. And we can have the same job title, be working in the same department, but because of our class years and our tenure years and the hybrid parity, there would be a difference in the amount of change to our overall compensation. So, what I would say is a percentage behind the market, like that accountant position that was fourteen percent above market, let's say it was fourteen percent behind market. That doesn't mean that every accountant is getting a fourteen percent raise. It's going to be, that's where the methodology comes in, the hybrid parity methodology, and it does it equitably based on the years of service and the year and the time in class.
Average of all the accountants would then be that fourteen percent.
Gotcha.
Are they going to come down fourteen percent to?
Yeah, Mike gets cut.
Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, nobody gets a cut.
There, there is no recommendation that we make to have somebody make less money. Correct?
Right.
Which, in this market, you know, going back to the first question that Commissioner Ross asked, it'd be tough for me to identify an area where I would say, hey, you know, we're definitely, we gotta, you know, they're paying them too much.
All the more, all the more important, as we move forward with this and if we approve this hybrid parity, it is critical that from now on and moving forward to, to, I don't want to say eliminate compression. I don't know that you can do that completely, but to keep it under somewhat control, we have got to stay in line with our annual COLA and do exactly what Bobby says about studying those.
Well, we, our COLA will help some. We've got another, we've got two other issues that we have to make some policy decisions about when the time comes. One is, Rob talked about moving somebody through with merit pay.
Right.
But you have job positions that score three consistently over time, which means they're doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. They're doing their job. They're here on time. They leave on time. They do what they're supposed to do. They don't create any problems. They don't do anything other than what they're supposed to do. Some of those people don't have opportunities to shine. There's nothing, if you drive a truck, you go to work, you drive the truck, you go home, you get off. Where are you going to do something meritorious other than showing up every day and doing what you're supposed to, which is what everybody's supposed to do, which is a three? If you don't have some mechanism based on time to move that guy through the system, then he's never going to get any higher than he is on the day of the salary study until you do the next salary study.
Right.
And so, we've got to have some balance between merit pay being the sole mechanism to move it through and some other mechanism. If we're going to move everybody who is a satisfactory employee through the grade over the length of tenure here, and, and that's just a philosophical policy thing that you all have to work through when we get there to figure out how we're going to do that. And how we're going to fund it.
That's where your department heads will be critical.
Right.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's kind of like a, you're looking at, you know, you, you've got the same person now who's got a year's experience. That's worth something.
Well, and then you have another issue that we deal with every day, Elizabeth and I, is when we hire people. If you hire somebody that has ten years of experience from somewhere else, you're typically not starting them at your minimum pay. You were giving them some level of credit for the experience that you have, or else we can't hire them. And so, that automatically puts somebody in with one-year experience at or above a level of somebody who started yesterday at the same time with no experience, and you've created an anomaly there as well that you can't control. If you're going to hire people that have experience in whatever it is you're hiring for. And so, the salary study will fix that every five years, but it create, it is another mechanism that creates some compression issues that you can't control with COLAs or other things.
But don't you, when you hire that person with ten years' experience under this twenty-one-point grade plan, you would hire them at a higher grade.
We would, but I hire.
So, the, the ten years' experience is moot.
But you hire, I hire you, you have no experience, and I hire you at the minimum salary. I hire Rob, and his first day is the same as yours. He's got ten years' experience. We're hiring him higher up on the salary scale. You all have been with the county exactly the same amount of time, doing exactly the same job, and he's making X dollars more than you. And we'll forever, if we don't adjust over time.
That's understandable, because he's coming into the position with experience.
It's understandable at this level. It is understandable at the employee level.
Yeah, the pay plan does not contemplate experience when you slot people into the new pay plan. So, if you have a new hire, that, that is, as you say, that's a policy decision. How do you want to have policy direct staff as to how you would want to treat that? But this slots people competitively. So, if you had an open position in that accountant position, and let's say an accountant was a one oh six pay grade, then when you hire somebody in, you know, your policy's going to be one of two ways. If you're not going to value outside experience and slot them according to the experience that they bring in, then you'd probably be slotting them at the minimum.
That's impossible. That's, that's, that's nonsensical. Isn't that nonsensical? What am I missing here?
No, we don't do that. They don't do that.
That's why I said it's nonsensical. We don't.
The only point I've had in bringing that up is we were talking about ways that create compression that aren't controllable, and that's one of them. And so, when you do that.
Yeah, that's a fact of life. I mean.
I understand, but.
It's going to happen. Not everybody is equal. I mean, if we're.
We did not give credit before, and then since the last pay plan, we started giving more credit for outside experience because it was a, a huge issue that we had before.
How, how could you ignore outside experience?
If you want an HPC technician, unless you hire him right out of COA, he's going to have five years or ten years' experience, which is what we want. You can't pay him the minimum salary.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I'm in complete agreement. So, how would we ignore that?
Yeah.
That's why we don't anymore, because we can't.
So, we don't. So, we, we have done that, but, but as we, again, we're having the conversation now. We need to have it budget time. As we talk about how are we going to move people through these grades to minimize that compression so that the cost of the next salary study is less than the cost of this study, those are the kind of things we've got to talk about, make some policy decisions, and understand what the ramifications of that are.
If there are no other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rob. Very good detail. Can't thank you enough for all your, some work on this. I'll yield to the board if they have any more questions of Rob at this point. If not, we'll, we'll, I'll ask the county manager to give us some direction in, in what he's looking for and what, what timeframe.
So, a couple of things. One is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Yeah, thank you, Rob.
Everything has recommended the hybrid pay model. And that is also the recommendation of Elizabeth and, and my recommendation as well. It seems to hit all the bases for the issues we're trying to resolve and it, sort of the middle ground and affordability as well. So, that was what we recommended. We think that does the best for what we're trying to get at. And so, the first decision you have to make is, is that the model that you all want to use as we go forward? Assuming you decided that that was the model to go, then the next question is, how do we implement it? As you remember, the last time we did this, we implemented over two years. We paid half of it in the first fiscal year, and we paid the other half in the second fiscal year. Before you, there were some spreadsheets that Dave gave. One of them has a blue budgeted in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. At the top, it's a smaller of the two sheets. That's really sort of an implement, implementation plan. If we wanted to do this going forward and we wanted to do it all at one time, is what this contemplates. If you look down your, your left side, you see general C and D sanitation. Those are the various funds that would fund salaries for those particular departments. General funds everything that's not one of the ones listed below general.
What, what is DCAA?
Airport.
And that's ten slash ninety-four?
That's the fund number.
Ten slash ninety-four.
On our budget sheet, David calls it the ten ninety-four fund. The general fund's the ten fund.
Of course.
The C and D's the twenty fund.
Okay. All right.
So, so that's what that is. All right.
Thank God, we got that information.
So, if you, if you, let's just use the top line. Let's use the general fund because that's really the one that impacts us the most. If you look across, you see that the hybrid cost of that is three point five two one six seven one. That is the cost of the, of the hybrid cost. That's with benefits, right, Dave? So, that's what, if we would.
And the first three numbers, Bobby, five oh one oh six oh, five oh one oh seven oh, what, what is that?
That's just the line items in this year's budget that you have in budget amounts in. It's already budgeted that much in this year.
So, we have five hundred.
Yeah, I'm not trying to slow it down. I'm just trying to clear the slides so I know what I'm looking at again. That's all.
Under the, under the column, five oh one oh six oh.
Five hundred thousand something.
We have five hundred thousand dollars set aside in that fund to fund this plan. In the five oh one oh seven oh fund, we've got six hundred ninety-eight thousand set aside to fund this plan.
So, there are two different funds in there.
Two different funds. So, so, right. So, we've got one point one million, almost one point two million dollars available right now to fund the salary plan.
Okay.
Okay?
That's helpful. Thank you.
All right. So, the cost of the plan becomes three point five million dollars with benefits. That's the total cost out of that, out of this general fund to fund the plan. If you did half of it, then obviously it's one point seven million dollars. If you wanted to fund the whole thing, we could start and implement it in January. If we implemented in January, we would have to come up with five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars out of the fund balance to fund it for the rest of the year. We had enough money to fund the whole thing, the, the one point seven million, which is six months. We have enough money, if we added five hundred and sixty-two to the one point one nine eight, to fund it for the balance of this year. Okay? And then, in next year's budget, we would have to come up with two point three million in the budget to fund the full plan for the next fiscal year.
But our growth would cover that, correct?
We, we believe. If things go as.
But I just did it. It's, it's one point eight five percent of this year's budget.
So, so, yeah, we're, we're looking at usually three to five percent growth.
Likely we.
What you're saying is the first one point eight five percent of growth goes to the.
There's, there's, there's two things going on in the last column, Bobby, because if the hybrid cost is three point fi, and I'm going to drop all the digits. It's three point five million. We're covering one point eight. We've already got one point two in the budget, so point five six would get us there. There's obviously additional something to get to two point three million, because the math isn't simple.
We're using non-recurring funds for the, for the January to June part of this. So, so some of those funds don't carry over into the next budget.
Again, I'm struggling. I'm getting hybrid cost of three five. We're going to cover a million eight of it.
So, think of it this way. We're taking, we're taking, we're taking five hundred thousand plus six hundred ninety-eight thousand out of our savings account.
No, you included that in this year's.
No, that's in the budget.
It's in the budget.
And is that recurring next year if we don't change it? So, that, that's a recurring number.
There's your one point two.
Okay? And.
You guys following me? My mic out here on the limo.
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following you.
You, you've got one point two million in this year's budget set aside to cover this. Next year, you're going to need the three point five, so the two point three is just the difference between those two numbers.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
So, I have one point two in this year's budget.
That's recurring.
Right. And I need to cover three and a half. And a half-year hybrid cost, the half year being January through June.
June.
Okay. So, that's Jan-June. Once again, guys, there's a lot going on. I'm just trying to make sure I can read, read the slide. That's all. That means that when we come to the following year, there's the two point three to add to our quote "ongoing" automatic budget of one point two that's in there.
Right.
So, the three point five
Annual.
is an ongoing every single year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay. And then the other funds that are underneath it, the same logic follows in those funds.
Right. And the water fund is the biggest. I mean, I'm not chasing six. I mean, I'm not chasing $6,000 here, guys.
I wanted to mention that one. Yeah, that's 3% of the water fund revenue. Your rate model says we've done 2% a year for the next five years is what it projected. Quick and dirty ran it this year. That two for 24 would probably need to be three, but it looks like it stabilizes after that, so you could go back to the twos. So it's not, it's an issue there, but not a unsolvable one.
So.
Okay.
So where we are then is whether you do it today or whether you want to take this home and mull on it a little bit and do it at our next meeting, we've got to know whether you, you want to, one, use the hybrid model, and two, implement it on the schedule here. And if, if you don't want to implement it on the schedule here, then we've got to, we can essentially divide this in half and do it over however many, or two years, or however many years you say, but.
It would be my suggestion to implement it full, because certainly we've got the funds. There's plenty to do it.
Agreed.
We're buying a little bit of time with this, too.
Yeah, what, what we need to do is digest this and, and put it on the agenda for the seventh.
Yep.
And, and make a decision. But with that said, I don't want us to, I don't want us to hesitate in moving forward with the second portion of this and doing some, doing some, I don't know if you seek Rob's help to do that, if you do that internally, but I don't want to procrastinate on that second piece.
So in our budget workshops, my suggestion would be that we tackle that. And at that time, Elizabeth can talk to us about various mechanisms to move us through the scale. Dave can cost those out. We'll be able to then compare them with the other needs, because there's going to be some things that we can't avoid in the budget, like, you know, our software costs going up, our maintenance plans going up, things that are just going to go up in the budget that we've got to fund as opposed to what we could postpone. And we have to balance that and the revenues available with the cost of whatever it is we're going to do to try to move people through the scale. And that's just going to take us a while for us to work through that stuff.
Right. Yeah, I, I had two requests on granularity on this as opposed to, I mean, I'm not opposing the plan, but I'm looking at Elizabeth again. I'd like to make sure if there's any one individual that is to be adjusted by, and I'm going to use X percent to be determined, because if there's somebody in here that's going to get a 38% one-time increase, I'd like to know who that is. I don't need the name, I just want to know how many, because I've got this.
I can tell you, we, we can, they've got, when we, when we decide where we're going, we can run the spreadsheet and, and I can tell you that.
And number two, I'd like to, I know you told me performance is irrelevant. So individual A may be getting a 32% increase, and they show up half the time, and they've been a behavior problem, but we're giving them a 30% increase anyway. Right?
That.
That's right.
That could happen.
Somehow that, somehow I'm disconnecting, but okay.
Yep. This is not, this is, this does not take the name into account.
I get that.
This took posi, positions.
And conversely, it doesn't take the person who excelled at it in account either.
But I would just, to your position, your question, Rob, I mean, at some level, if, if you have a person in your organization who's not making market wage, whether he's a poor performer or a good performer, he should be making market wage. If he's a poor performer, you should get rid of him. You shouldn't.
Yeah, but we know that, that is, that is, that is as rare as.
That's right.
Let's be honest here.
That's right.
That doesn't. I've come from organizations where that happens fairly quickly, fairly regularly. But I know that government is a different kind of thing. Okay.
Okay. So if, with, if you're going to wait, and, which I hear you are, to, we'll put this on that next agenda, that there's really no decision.
Right.
For you to make today, you just have to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right.
If you have questions to ask, and then, you know, we're around. If you have questions that come up as you study through this, let me know. If I can't answer them, either Elizabeth or Dave can.
I would, yeah, this is, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan.
I'd kind of like to put this in the optics, that we're making an investment in our employees. We, we've been wrestling with some morale. I, I get asked about this in my district. But I, I see it as, you know, if we're going to be dealing with 3.5 in our budget every year, that I, I see it as an investment here. If this is going to solve a lot of our problems, is this, if this is going to inspire more performance, I would just prefer to look at it in terms of an investment.
It won't. It won't. It's not going to inspire performance, Danny.
Yeah.
I mean, it may be appropriate from a market position and a market rate, but I would contend it will not inspire performance.
And the purpose isn't to inspire performance. The purpose was to, to make, the purpose was to make it possible for us to hire and retain the people that we have.
I understand. I'm not arguing with you, Bobby.
Yeah. That's the important thing, to retain and hire.
You know, performance evaluations is a day for another topic that we need to possibly address, Commissioner Ross, to maybe.
I know.
Put, put some of that concern as you, as I very well have the same.
And we have a performance plan in place, and we just finished doing it. We're, we're completing that as we speak. And people will get their bonuses now, and they'll be on a fail curve similar to what you described, Commissioner Ross.
Yeah.
But we funded it such a low level, it doesn't do much to move somebody through the plan, as you suggested either. And so if that's what we're going to use, we've got to change the funding formula.
I'm still migrating on my journey from old days to new days, so thank you for that.
All right, anyone else? Once again, Rob Williamson, thank you so much for Evergreen Solutions LLC and the job you do for us. It's very, very much appreciated. Do you have anything else you'd like to add, address the board with?
Just want to say how grateful we were for the opportunity to work with you. And we hope that if you need any services in the future, that you'll think of us again. Really enjoyed it, you know, just to give us an excuse to come back here would not be a bad thing.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter and Elizabeth as well. I mean, just as a team effort, Evergreen team effort. Were you de facto team members?
I will ask, I will ask, oh, excuse me, Rob. I will ask the board if there's anything else, anyone else you'd like to bring up at this time?
Yes, I, I do, you can read it.
Go ahead.
We have a resolution that I'd like to.
This is consorting Morgan Italy. This says, whereas the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has obtained an emergency authorization to dredge the alternate channel west of the Bass Night Bridge, whereas significant funding and effort has been dedicated to opening this channel above the Corps in Dare County over recent months, whereas increased shoaling has led to unsafe conditions, especially for those mariners who are unfamiliar with the inlet, and channel depths prevent commercial vessels from accessing the inlet, causing seafood catch to be taken out of state or to other ports. And whereas the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers performed 11 vibrocour samples in the alternate channel and found one sample with less than 90% sand. And whereas the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has informed Dare County that due to the content of that sample, dredging cannot be performed in a section of the alternate channel, which has a controlling depth of five feet and a width of 40 feet. Whereas the prohibition of dredging this section of the alternate channel will cause the channel to close and prevent any dredging west of the bridge, which will bring significant economic impact to Dare County. And whereas the Corps has previously used hopper dredges to perform emergency dredging to dredge material with less than 90% sand and place material west of the bridge in Oregon inlet, therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners formally request that emergency authorization, authorization be granted to allow for the continued dredging of the entire alternate channel. This is the 27th day of October 2022.
Move to approve.
Motion, motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve as presented. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Commissioner Ross?
I'm not familiar with this. This sounds like a very big deal. Can I get just a background?
I'll give you background on it. The alternate channel, we got where we can actually start really dredging on the, on the southern end of it. And the Corps had taken vibrocour samples at 11 different locations throughout the channel. One of the vibrocour samples had an estimated 50% silt, 50% sand.
Yes.
So they're worried about the turbidity of the dump, of the water in the dump area, so.
Turbidity of the water in the dump area.
When you dump, when you dump the silt in, the water gets cloudy with silt.
Yep.
Um, so they, the permit was pulled by, actually, the headquarters in Atlanta.
Now, was Ms. Katie going to do this dredging?
Ms. Katie was doing it.
Was doing.
They called her. So, so they.
Made a stop.
Yeah, they made it stop.
This is the background I didn't have, guys.
We've, we've been in conversations with the Corps. We had extensive conversation with them yesterday. And there are several ideas. We can monitor the turbidity of the water as, as we dump, you know, with partial loads. We could also take like 100 cubic yards of the material that's got the 50/50 mix and then add sand to it by dredging in another area, so you get to the 90/10 that they want, and then dump it. We can monitor the turbidity on all the dumps. We're in the process right now of finding a.
I understand. This, this helps me, thank you. That's all I needed.
It's complicated.
I just didn't understand. But it's okay. I'm with you.
Right.
This is just the next step in it, and we have several more steps.
Any other questions, Jim, in the resolutions? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things. One of the things I wanted to bring up was the 2022 commercial flounder seizing, season will be shut down at 6:00 PM on October 28th.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
The quota has been met. Unbelievable. The recreational strike bass in our Almarl Sound, there has been some changes in that. The proclamation to kill the season for this year has been overturned, and it will be open November 1st. And will be closed either after the allotment is, the total allotment landings, or by December 31st, whichever comes first. So we will have a strike bass season this year.
Steve, what about, there's a talk about a seven-year impact on speckled trout, which is going to hamper recreationally.
Yeah, yeah, they're look, it's, it's really complicated to get into, especially right here.
And, and next up is pinfish. And, and mullet. We're talking. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. One of the things that's up on the radar from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, they had a cargo ship coming in, and the cargo ship was coming in a little bit fast, but they're well within their, the, the speed limits, and they struck a white whale. So NOAA is now trying to put out a, an amendment to where if a vessel, a current speed of vessels for 65 feet or over are supposed to slow it down, 60, less, 65 feet or over, they want to change it to add in a 35 to a 64-foot vessel, slows it down to 10 knots in a 20 nautical mile restriction of the shore. You try to tell our commercial, I'm not, our charter boats, that this would fall under to try to come in and Oregon inlet in less than 10 knots.
It'd triple their time.
That's a safety issue.
It's a safety issue, and it triples their time getting out.
Yeah.
So several members of the Senate, U.S. Senate, several members of our Congress have written letters in opposing to it. The only reason why I bring this up, because we have an opportunity now to do, to, to put out a resolution, or at least a letter stating our opposition to this, if y'all so desire, to add to that for this particular thing that is just unreal.
What's the closing date on that response?
That's what I was getting, the closing date for this is October 31st.
All right, so we can, we can, we, can you prepare something to present to us at our next meeting?
No, no, after.
I mean, oh, the 31st, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry, 30, oh, 31st of.
This month.
This, oh, well, heck.
That's, that's Monday.
She has a letter that she got a copy of from somebody.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a letter here from the North Carolina Watermen's United.
We can, we can mirror that letter.
Can we mirror that?
For the chairman's signature.
It lines out all the points and, and all the safety features.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, absolutely.
How many, how many such collision incidents have there been in our waters in the last?
One. No, 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 no. There was one whale strike. It was not in North Carolina.
Right, when the.
Yeah, so this is kind of like we had one case of something, and we will now require millions to go through and do something.
Exactly.
It's, it's upside down, guys. Okay, we're all in agreement.
And you think the Navy's going to comply?
No.
No. Do you, what's the board's pleasure? Commissioner House has a letter.
I move that we mirror the letter that Commissioner House has and send it on with respect to the Dare County Board of Commissioners.
And give me the permission to sign.
Yes, yes.
Is that the pleasure of the board?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion, Commissioner Ross?
So moved that we mirror that letter with the chairman's authority to sign such letter.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion there? Hearing none, then those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one quick comment. I had our commissioner clerk, Cheryl, print this off for me. The nation's report card shows drop in North Carolina achievement scores since start of the pandemic. And one of the supporting headlines is test scores show historic COVID setbacks for children across the United States.
We knew that was coming.
Yeah, somebody on this board actually wrote a op-ed in a certain paper in August of 2020, saying this is going to be a disaster. And here we are. So I would just urge you, nation's report card is the title of that report with the incredible drop in performance as a result.
When you have high-performing kids, and this has hamstrung them, that's just, that's a, it's a tragedy.
We saw it coming. We predicted it, we wrote about it, and our leaders said, we don't care. Go back, honest to God, guys, I pulled the op-ed that I wrote, and I read it, and I was sad to see so much of it unfortunately now transpiring in this current environment. The test scores makes me so angry. Anyway, thank you, guys. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. And, and along those same lines, I'm not sure how this latest virus affecting our children may come into play with that as well, Commissioner Ross, because we now are seeing a pretty significant, serious issue with this latest virus across the country in all states. So keep, keep those kids in your thoughts and prayers,